Welcome to the March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one City of Broussard Council Meeting. Please silence your cell phones and if anyone from the audience would like to comment on an item listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue card located at the back of the room and turn your card into our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five meetings. Please stand for the pledge.
We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, O mighty God, to enlighten our minds so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Item two point one, acceptance of the minutes of the February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Do we have a motion to accept?
I move.
Do we have a second? The minutes were provided in the packet for everyone's review. Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question.
District one, yes. District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District six.
Yay.
At large. Motion carries.
Item three point one, approval of the January two thousand and twenty-one financial report. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Our presenter tonight is Mrs. Karen Fontenot, our CFO. Welcome Karen.
Hi guys. Before we talk about the financials in your packet, I just want to give everyone an update. So, the last meeting.
Two meetings ago.
First meeting in February. I was like, what day are we? I had discussed that we had met with the bond people. We were good for refunding. We were gonna save about one point one million dollars. About halfway through February, that savings fell to about seven hundred thousand. And as of the last week in February, the savings was at four hundred thousand. So, the bond market has substantially declined for us to realize those savings right now. So, we are again in a holding pattern until we can realize the savings that we want to get this refunding done. So, that's where that stands. So, they're keeping me updated. They're monitoring weekly, monthly. So, I'm in touch with them often. So, they're, uh, they're still looking out for us. So, when that is at the level that we're ready to commit, we'll, we'll get it done. Otherwise, we'll just keep waiting. Um, your January financials are in your packets. Just to give everyone an update, um, next week you'll see these reports. I have not sent them out yet. But, um, our most recent sales tax reports, they were thirteen percent over budget. So, this, the money that we got last month was December sales collected in January. So, you saw a lot of Christmas shopping. So, we did see a decline which I somewhat expected, not to this extent, but it is still thirteen percent over budget. So, as of right now, we are still twenty-five percent over budget on our sales tax dollars. So, what that means is for each of our, for our one cent sales tax, we have two of them. That's a total of two point three million dollars added to our existing budget. And our rec sales tax is an additional five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. So, if we hold that pattern, we're looking at a good adjustment going into the end of the year. Um, does anyone have any questions about the financials in the report?
Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comments.
Question.
District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District six.
Yay.
At large. District one.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point one, Broussard Fire Department, two thousand and twenty annual report. Deputy Fire Chief Justin Denais is here to give the report. Welcome, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, all. Um, this report's something we typically do. Uh, we capture our data throughout the year and with something we wanna bring to you guys, make sure you're aware of where we stand and what we're doing. Outline the highlights, outline our call volume, what type of calls and things of that nature. So, I'll thumb through this presentation real quick, real quick, stop and ask any questions if you wanna ask during the presentation or at the end of it. Um, so highlights for two thousand and twenty, we purchased with the help of the council, obviously, two replacement fire engines. That's gonna replace two trucks that are twenty years old, some, one of them a little older than that. Um, those trucks are set to be completed April twenty-sixth. So, we have a set completion date right now unless that pushes, but, uh, that's gonna be very, very valuable to us and the city as a whole. Uh, we purchased fifty-three air packs and a hundred and six replacement bottles. Uh, that's to replace again some agent fleets. We had got a big grant approximately fifteen years ago, which was able to replace a lot of those and we were to the point now where those needed to be replaced again. So, um, this is a tremendous asset to the city. And on top of that, as a city, we were able to donate twenty-five, twenty-five or twenty-six packs to do so with over fifty bottles. Uh, they took delivery of that week before last and we're very, very grateful, uh, Mayor Thibodeau and Chief DuYong over there. Um, we implemented the drive-by, birthday drive-by program. Obviously, with COVID, it put a strain on us as an organization. We're very, very involved in public service. So, we implemented that birthday drive-by program. We've hit hundreds. Um, I believe we got six scheduled this week or something like that. Um, it, it's something that's still ongoing. It's something that we would prefer to do rather than sending a truck to a birthday party for a truck showing. We can do the drive-by. Our guys are in, they're out. There's no contact with, with anyone from the public and the kids are really, really enjoying those things. So, it's been very successful. Um, when that initiated, we had got the PD involved. It was a team effort across the board. So, uh, it worked out for the city as a whole. Um, the purchase of the ci, of the property for the future development of fire and police complex by the city council. Um, that was a huge highlight for us. The acquisition of Ember, uh, we brought in our dog, our Dalmatian, to the organization who's still very, very involved in our public service. Um, and the focus on the water system throughout the city, we wanted to make sure we hit on that because those things are huge when it comes to rating time. We're not gonna see that upfront. Yes, the city's putting money in the ground, but later on, whenever we get to rating, we talk about looping lines. Albertson's Parkway has always been a, a problem area for us. If we connect that line under the tractor, should be able to boost some pressure. Uh, the additional infrastructure, Hernandez Heights Incorporated, no hydrants, Bonnet Ambassador. Uh, Daniel and them are working on that now, I believe, putting those hydrants over there, which is very, very valuable to us and running the, that infrastructure on Bonnet, on South Bernard Road as it's being developed. And then that above-ground storage tank, that, that's been a topic of conversation here for quite a while. Uh, that's gonna be very, very helpful for us and pressure for the city, um, on the fire side. We got that additional storage in the event we have a major incident. Uh, total incidents for the year, seven hundred and ninety calls. Um, of those seven hundred and ninety, you can see three hundred and fifty-one of them were medicals and recs. Typically, that always carries our load. Uh, eighty-one of those were fires, sixty-three hazardous conditions. Uh, that includes CO emergencies and things of that nature. Uh, forty-three service calls, that's down significantly. As you can tell, um, a big part of that is due to COVID. We, we, whenever we go out there and we do a public service event, we create a public service call. Park standbys, St. Julian jams, all those things require a public service call for us to track it. And, uh, we, we just don't have those events. So, we still maintain forty-three events. Uh, we didn't do a, a call for every single drive-by. Obviously, it would have been too much. It would have pushed this number well over, uh, probably closer to a thousand, but, uh, that's where we stand. Good intent calls, smoke scares, fire alarm activations, things of that nature, one hundred and forty-one and ninety-six false alarms. Uh, others include ice storms, um, any tree removals or anything like that. We had, there's a huge influx of that. You can see fifteen with the hurricane. Uh, we were assisting with, with trees down and everything like that. So, our trucks out on the road, we created a call so we can track our apparatus, know where they were at every point in time. Uh, calls per month, you can see the breakdown. Uh, it's in your packet. So, I just wanted to make sure you guys see that. Typically, it trends, October's normally higher than everything else. December typically climbs also. Um, training attendance overview, it's three years captured right there. Uh, seven point seven in two thousand and eighteen, nine point three average per class in two thousand and nineteen. And then in two thousand and twenty, we were up to nine point five nine over forty-six training classes. The big thing I want you to see, we had talked about, uh, when we talked about paper call funding last month, that month of September down to December, right? We covered September first to December thirty-first. You can see it here. I included it on the, uh, the chart, but not the graph. Our average per class in those three months, or those four months is thirteen firemen. So, you're seeing that influx with the new people coming in. They wanna learn. They're a part of those trainings. Uh, incident attendant, same situation. We've increased eight, nine, two thousand and twenty. We're back up to ten. Um, and then the month, those four months, again, we're up to twelve. We're averaging twelve people per incident. By district, five hundred and eighty-nine of our calls were within the city limits of Broussard. Uh, we had eighty-seven calls in our first new unincorporated area, which that would be your Cajun Estates, your, um, Shannon Doas, Bayou Tar Two Road area that's not incorporated. A hundred and six calls out of district in the parish. That's automatic aid or mutual aid to Youngsville, Milton, Lafayette, anywhere like that inside of Lafayette Parish. And your out-of-district in St. Morton Parish is where we provided aid outside of our city limits in St. Morton Parish. That's eight incidents. I didn't slide. There we go. Average response time, we, we harped on this pretty heavily last year with five minutes. Um, we're down to four minutes and three seconds. I can tell you that that is skewed a little bit because of the storms, your hurricanes, your ice storm, where we were manned. If we had thirty incidents during that time and we had a truck on the road, that truck may have been on that incident in thirty seconds or a minute rather than the typical three or four-minute response time that you would see for anywhere in the city. If we had a truck close, we were able to get them there. So, I, I wouldn't take that four-minute with a grain of salt, but it is down significantly from last year. Uh, the next slide is your paper call breakdown. You can see that incidents and training totals correspond to the cost, the annual cost. Um, you can see October, ninety-two total incidents in October, which is very, very significant. I don't, that's probably our highest month on record. Um, November, December, again, incidents are up around the sixty, seventy mark and your paper call totals were significant. Um, you'll see in February, actually, when you see next year's presentation, February was our highest month because we staffed for, you know, three days because of the ice storm. So, that drove that paper call up with call volume and things of that nature. But it, it all corresponds. Um, cost per month, you can see it. I charted it out right there and I charted the incidents on the other side. So, you can see the comparison in the event you wanna look at it that way rather than in the cho, in the, uh, the tr, the table. It's, it's in a graph right there also. So, uh, that's it for me unless you guys have any questions for us. Thank y'all. Uh, like, like I said from the start, you guys are a hu, huge success, huge part of what we do. Um, without your funding, without the dedication, whether it be directly to us and trucks or apparatus or equipment or anything of that nature payroll, then we wouldn't be able to function. And then on the backside, the, the dedication to water supply and infrastructure and things like that in this city helps us tremendously. Because if we don't have water, our operations change. It, it takes an additional six or eight people to be able to provide water supply, just water supply rather than one person hooking up to a hydrant and being able to supply scene. So, uh, those things are very valuable to us. Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes. If your call volume is during the day, then typically you have less volunteers. Yes. So, your pay, your paper call's gonna drive down, right? We may have had more medical calls in the month of October and those medical calls paid less than if one of our, if our firemen were on a working structure fire. Uh, we, when we organized or when we built the paper call program, we built it to skew in that direction where in the event we go to a medical call, yes, we may need to enhance to do CPR on someone because every two minutes we're swapping somebody out. But if we go to a fire call, we may pay them an additional five dollars more or ten dollars if it's at night because they're working four or five hours on a structure fire. Um, so yes, it, it could skew that direction in the month of October. Uh, with, I mean, October, you had ninety-two calls. You had eleven thousand dollars. In November, we spent ten thousand six hundred, but only sixty-two calls. If in November, fifty of those calls were fires and twelve were medical, then it would be more than fifty medicals and twelve fires. So, those things kinda overlap. And I, I can, if you wanna see it, you wanna sit down and look at it, I can pull it any way you want. I can pull you calls by type per month, anything like that. It, it becomes a lot of data. It's a lot to put in a presentation. But if you wanna sit down and go through it, I'm more than willing to do it. No problem. We appreciate the support. Absolutely.
So, I'd like to say something also. Uh, just looking at the, the roster of firemen that we have in this town, this is, this is a volunteer fire department. And I mean, y'all must have, what, forty or fifty names?
Yes. So, i, if you look at the list, um, I don't have it in the presentation, but if you look at the list, the top section is just firefighters. That is guy, that is people who are volunteer. Not only may they be on the paid side, but if we get a call in the middle of the night and they're not, they're on, not on that paid clock, they volunteer their time to come here. The ones on the bottom that say daytime staff are strictly paid employees. They don't volunteer for the city. Um, and those guys, we pay out of that city payroll budget to work part-time shifts. So, you don't have to deal with civil service. We don't have to pay them benefits. They have full-time jobs elsewhere. They gather training elsewhere. They, not only do they train elsewhere, but they train here. But we were able to split those guys into part-time shifts. Uh, Chief Pouton is hiding in the back back there, but he does a tremendous job with scheduling, you know, those thirty, eight, forty people to be able to cover twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week in this city. And they take their money. Whenever they're done, they go home. If we need them, if we have a major incident, we pick up the phone, we ring their phone. They'll come in, they'll get on the clock and they'll do what we need to do. But we have volunteers that cover the majority of that. We can manage with what we have on the clock and then the volunteers cover everything else. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Justin. And I, I can tell you that Mayor Thibodeau and, uh, his fire chief from Dulceville were extremely grateful for the air packs and the bottles that were donated to them. And they impressed upon me how fortunate we were to have such an active volunteer fire department. Um, and they couldn't, they couldn't say enough good things and, and express their gratitude loudly enough for, uh, for, for the equipment they were getting. So, thank you for what you're doing for our city. Item four point two, variance request for five oh three South Morgan, Mr. Brett Denais. Request to build at road height instead of one foot above road height. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Uh, our presenter tonight, um, is Councilman Ray Garrett, who first brought this to the city's attention. Mr. Garrett?
Yes, uh, he approached me and asked if he could get a one-foot variance only because our ordinance reads that we need to be a foot above road height. Uh, with that said, he would be about two and a half to three feet higher than his neighbors. So, he's asking if he could at least bring it down. And I really think now he's asking for more like seven inches. I think he'll be about five inches above the road now.
And Mr. Denais is here if you'd like to say.
Yeah, his dad's here. So, if you'd like to say anything.
I know Councilman Garrett is, is supportive of that. He's expressed that to me, that it all makes sense. I, I, our ordinance, it does make sense. The, the city has that ordinance because we want people to build a little higher and, and not get into situations where they're flooding. But sometimes in the more mature part of town, older part of town, it just doesn't work because of the way the other properties have developed. So, it, do, do I understand your intent correctly, Mr. Garrett? Gerald, do you, would you like to comment on that or have, do you have an opinion?
No, I think it's within the discretion of the co. It's, it's within the discretion of the county to, to move forward.
Do you think the city is creating a liability for itself, um, when granting this variance?
One of the things that, uh, we might wanna consider is obtaining, uh, just a, a whole harmless from the homeowner, uh, to protect this, I mean, to keep the city, uh, free from any potential liability. If the homeowner would be willing to do that, then I think we'd be in much better shape.
In the event that the, the structure would flood in the future, is where you're going?
So, I can prepare something and, and get with you on that. Good deal. Thank you.
Any other public discussion, Tina?
No public comment.
Call for the question.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District six.
Yay.
At large. District one. Yes. District two.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five point two, thank you, Mrs. Denais. I, item five point one, resolution, uh, number six six zero dash two one. A resolution declaring the contract for the Main Street parking project as being substantially complete. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second.
Our presenter tonight is Mr. Daniel Hutchinson with Como Engineering. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, Mel and I did a, uh, walkthrough in the ma, uh, Main Street parking a couple of weeks ago. Um, everything is done. They've actually cleaned up. There's no outstanding items on their punch list. And, um, we're just recommending substantial completion for the mayor to be able to sign substantial completion.
So, you and Mel have both satisfied that the project is complete?
Me and Mel walked through it and, uh, they've actually addressed the issues. They've addressed, it was just, it was my cleanup site and they've addressed all of that since then.
Okay, thank you. Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comment.
Council discussion?
Question.
District four.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District six.
Yay.
At large.
Yay.
District one. Yes. District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Daniel. Item five point two, resolution number six six one dash two one. A resolution amending the cooperative endeavor agreement for firefighting services by in between the parish of Lafayette and the Broussard Fire Department, paying the city twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars to offset fire department's payroll expense. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Our presenter tonight is Chief Brian Chompine of our fire department. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Welcome. Uh, this is a result of the rededication of Create Funding that was done by the voters back in November of last year. Um, I had the opportunity to assist with writing a, um, parish-wide fire, fire protection improvement plan in an effort to get the, uh, PIL rating lowered in the parish. Uh, as you know, it went up to six this past last, rat, last rating. So, we're trying to do what we can to, um, to lower that rating back to the five or, or greater. So, this resolution is an agreement, um, it's a revised agreement that will, uh, give the city an additional twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars to, and we wrote it as to offset payroll expenses. All the chiefs know that the money was directed towards, um, adding personnel to better the rating. Um, the last time we did something like this in our, in our resolution, the city clerks and the municipalities, uh, inherited a lot of extra work that just didn't make any sense. So, when we wrote the plan, we said we didn't want the city clerks to have to do with any extra work with sending schedules in, sending payroll records in, that we wanted the money to go straight to the cities to better, uh, staffing. And, uh, so that's what this agreement is, is, um, gonna take care of. I couldn't turn any questions if anybody has any other questions, but I'm trying to be short.
Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comments.
Is there any council discussion?
District five.
Yes.
District six.
Yay.
At large. District one. Yes. District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief. Resolution, item five point three, resolution number six six two dash two one. A resolution awarding the Broussard Main Street improvements Phase One project to Elliott Construction for the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand and fifty-four dollars. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second.
Um, do we have someone here tonight from DuPlana's Design Group?
No, I don't think so. Uh, but he did, Joseph, um, did provide the council with a letter. If you look in your pocket, that on February twenty-fifth, um, they received four bids and the apparent low bidder was Elliott Construction, uh, in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand and fifty-four, fifty-four dollars. Um, and they, he is recommending that you award the, uh, the bid to Elliott Construction for that work.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Is there council discussion?
Question. District six.
Yay.
At large. District one. Yes. District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Item five point one, ordinance number two one dash six eight three. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one operating budget of revenues for twelve thousand dollars to extend a water line on Alice's Parkway from the Toy Box Storage across BNSF Railroad to PSC Supply. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Second.
Uh, presenter tonight is, uh, Mr. Mel Bertrand, our Director of Public Works. Welcome, Mel.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, previously, we've come to y'all for, uh, to amend the budget in the amount of fi, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars to connect this loop. This is the same loop that Justin alluded to a while, a while ago that will connect, um, the water line underneath the railroad tracks on Albertson's Parkway from the Toy Box to PSC Supply. Um, we had come to y'all for fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, which will be covered by, uh, two different grants from the state. Um, they will cover that total. We've since gotten three RFPs for the work and the low bid came in at sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, which is about twelve thousand over what we had originally asked for. But that money can also be, um, reimbursed through the Act forty-five grant, which the mayor had worked with the Congress. Uh, um, y'all may remember a while back that it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant for water lines. So, we can use some of this for the twelve thousand dollars to reimburse the, uh, so this water line will be totally covered by grants. If anybody has any questions, be glad to answer. Oh, yeah. Yeah. We had to get permitting from the railroad and they will be on site when we do it. Yes, sir.
Have the permits been secured, Mel?
Yes. Permits have been secured.
Tina, is there any public discussion?
No public comment.
Council discussion?
Question.
At large. District one. Yes. District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District six.
Yay.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mel. Item five point two, ordinance number two one dash six eight. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one operating budget of revenues and expenditures for up to forty-eight thousand dollars for the fire department used office building project. Do we have a motion to introduce? Uh, our presenter tonight is again Broussard Fire Chief Brian Chompine. Welcome back.
Thank you. This, um, amendment to our budget is to purchase a used office building. Our intent is to move our administration out of the sta, station on Main Street in an effort to give the guys who are sleeping there at night, uh, a better facility. Currently, we have what I like to call a studio apartment upstairs. It has one exit. Our insurance, um, hates it. They've been trying to, you know, telling us for years, recommending we do something else. Uh, so we, you know, when we came up with the project of the new facility, um, and we started getting prices, we realized that the prices were, um, you know, construction is quite high at this time. So, we did tell the mayor that we would wait for our project, uh, for the new station in an effort so that they could build the police station and the council chambers first. Um, once that happens. Um once that happens, then we'll, we can take over one of the other buildings temporarily until ours is done. Or until we can plan um and budget allows us to um to build that facility. So we've agreed to wait. But in an effort to better the living environment of the firemen who are working twenty-four hour shifts uh and around the clock. Um we've felt like it was a uh pretty much a common sense approach to move administration out of the station. Into another building. Uh when looking at that, we looked at a lot of options and everything was costly. Written a, written a office trailer, written a building. It's just money that was, that we felt was gonna be just thrown away. And that's something I didn't want to do. So kept looking, I found an office building that was um used and could be moved. Uh we did some inspections. Uh Councilman Gary helped us with um looking at it, make sure it was structurally sound. Uh and, you know, we got with the mayor and my idea was to move it to a location in the city. That another agency could benefit from once we moved out. So we wouldn't have an empty building that no one could use. Once we were finished or once we moved to a different building. So uh we came up with the idea of having it in Arsenal Park. Um once we move out, the park can move in. We can share services while we're there. We can have one internet service going into our building and the park can tap into that. We can have a camera system in our building and the, and the park can tap into our camera system. So we can combine services uh in the end, saving some money. So we're asking for forty-eight thousand to um start the project and, you know, we'll get as much done as we can. We feel like we can get it fully operable uh for that price, uh unless there's some unforeseen things that we don't anticipate. The Fire Department helped clear some property and the city has done some dirt, brought some dirt in to build it up. Um, you know, that in, in case we do do this, that uh we, we would be ready. I can answer any questions if anyone has any questions.
Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Brian, did you um meet with the Fire Committee, the coun- the Council Fire Committee?
Yes, we did meet with the Fire Committee when we first uh started thinking about this project. And when we decided to wait on um furthering our project and letting the Police Department. Um get their building first in the council chambers, uh we knew that that, that facility was important for the city. Uh we met with the Fire Committee and we discussed options and um we, we, we did some research. Reported back to the Fire Committee and uh we worked together on this project to um to come up with a, with a. Solution that we felt that was achievable, achievable for everybody.
Is there any council discussion?
Question.
District one? Yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Item five point three, ordinance number two one dash six eight five. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one operating budget reven- revenues and expenditures for twenty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. In the Fire Department payroll expense to add training, a training coordinator funded through Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government. Firefighting Service Contract. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Item also, thank you.
This is a uh direct um correlation with the amended contract. Uh we'll get the twenty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um and we felt the best use of the money was to put it into our training program and have a training coordinator. That would, that would be funded. Um this is a position that we've worked, that we designed several years ago. And we've been working with the Fire Committee. Um and we knew over the last few years that, you know, budget downturn and and et cetera. Uh didn't allow us to do this, but this position we feel is gonna bring our training up tremendously. As well as our PIL training credit, uh which is a huge part of the rating. We feel like this is going to boost those points tremendously uh in an, in an effort to um to. Continue to better the rating for the city of Broussard. And it was an opportunity to do it that it wouldn't cost the city any money. Being that we get this extra money to uh put towards staffing.
Brian, you think this, this amount of money would hold uh somebody qualified to teach this stuff?
Yes, we feel like it's uh, when we designed the program, we feel like the um. The, the position is gonna actually pay a little bit less than that, so there's gonna be a little bit of cushion uh in our payroll budget. Uh should it, should anything else go over, but uh it's gonna be right under that total. And we feel like we can get somebody qualified that um can do the job and do what we need the city, the Fire Department to be done.
Uh Chief, I have a question. Do, do we anticipate this create funding to be reoccurring?
Yes, uh it's a dedicated funding, um since the voters, it's the first dedicated funding for fire protection in the parish. Um so every year, the money comes in, January, February, so we'll get that money around this time every year. Uh but we do expect the, the funding to not go down, but to continue to grow uh as the population grows. So it should be, it's, it's dedicated uh in our to, for it to be taken away, it'd have to go back to the voters. Um and once we, once we put the whole plan in motion and the services across the parish. Uh especially in the smaller departments are, are increased, uh response times get better in those smaller departments. Um it's gonna have a direct uh correlation to the rating, uh improving the rating. So I don't see this money um going anywhere.
Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Any further council discussion or questions?
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you again, Chief. Item seven point one, ordinance number two one dash six seven eight. An ordinance of the city council enacting ordinances and sections to provide for the annexation of certain properties. Located on and along the northern side of Bayou Tartu Road in Section ninety-three. Township ten south, range five east, Lafayette Parish, Louisiana. Being known as the Douglas and Willad Dean Chassault Family LLC two annexation. And placed in the city of Broussard, District five. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll second.
Gerald, do you have any comments? This, we, we know, you know, this was presented at our last meeting and introduced. This is for final adoption.
That's correct. The uh public notice has been issued and uh a- as we noted last time, all of the petitions are in order. It's ready for adoption.
Any public comment, Tina?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven point two, ordinance number two one dash six seven nine. An ordinance of the city council enacting ordinances and sections to provide for the annexation of certain properties. Located on and along the western side of Youngsville Highway eighty-nine in Section nineteen. Township ten south, range five east, Lafayette Parish, Louisiana. Being known as the Delahoussier Investment LLC Annexation and placed in the city of Broussard, District six. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move.
We have a motion in a second. Gerald, do you have any comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, uh as with the other, uh it's publication has been, I mean, uh notice has been publicized. And uh all of the petitions are, are in order and it's ready for adoption.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment, Tina?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven point three, ordinance number two one dash six eight zero. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one operating budget of revenues and expenditures for up to. One hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for a ground storage tank. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move.
Again, this is an ordinance for adoption introduced at the last meeting. Uh this ground storage tank exists near City Hall. It'd be used to bolster our water system in that area and provide additional pressures in that system. It's a replacement of the existing older tank. Is there any public comment, Tina?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven point four, ordinance number two one dash six eight one. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one operating budget and revenues. Of revenues and expenditures for up to eighty-seven thousand dollars for the Hernandez Heights Water Line. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move.
Um, uh again, this item was presented at our last meeting. It's um providing a water line, additional money for a water line in Hernandez Heights subdivision. Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven point five, ordinance number two one dash six eight two. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one operating budget of revenues and expenditures. For forty thousand dollars for the Fire Department allocation for paid-on call. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Um, final adoption on this. It was presented at our last meeting. Mr. Denius?
Mayor, I presented that at the last meeting just to cover basically our paper call budget um allocation. We currently have sixty-two hundred and seventy dollars left in the account as of today. Uh that's checks written for the, the budget year. On a total budget year, we're like, we're a little over eighty-eight thousand, so uh we need the additional funding to cover us through the rest of the year for the paper call fund program. Uh that'll cover us through the rest of the budget year. Should get us into July.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any public comment, Tina?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item eight point one, adjournment of the meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Please drive safely.